If everyone can take their seats, we're gonna get started.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call and order this open session of City Council, the regular meeting of the City Council at 6:29 PM. Mr. Mo Wright, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Yeah.
He already here? Oh, sorry. That's right. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Everyone, pause the guard. Repeat after me. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you, Mo. I appreciate it. Mr. Peterson, I'm sorry, we're gonna have to call you back again to do it. Perhaps later this evening, we can do it. Thank you. And a roll call, Madam City Clerk, please.
Councilmember Francois.
Here.
Councilmember Keegan.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Here.
Mayor Protem Ditoi.
Here.
Mayor Seaman.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Mr. City Attorney, do you have a closed-session report for us, please?
Yes, I do, Mayor and Council. The Council met in closed session today to discuss the items identified on the agenda, and no action was taken that needs to be reported under the Brown Act. That concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Announcements. Do any of my colleagues have any announcements this evening? Of any kind? No? Well, I have one. The USA Volleyball. USA Volleyball will be hosting its U-19 World Championship Trials on the north side of the pier from Monday, June 16th through Thursday, June 19th. For more information, please visit www.usavolleyball.org. Having concluded all the announcements then, well, let's move on to the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Your Honor, before you approve it, just a reminder, and might as well do this now, that staff is recommending pulling Item 11I from the consent calendar. This is the Beach Cities Transit item. Again, staff would like to have discussions with Beach Cities Transit staff regarding some data collection, things that we would like before we bring this back to council.
Okay, so we'll be pulling it to a future date?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Very good, then. So is there a motion to approve the agenda with the exception of 11A?
11I.
Oh, I'm sorry, 11I. 11I to be pulled by staff for a future date.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Madam City Clerk, would you please open the voting?
And we'll conduct a roll call vote. Councilmember Francois.
Yes.
Councilmember Keegan.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Ditoi.
Aye.
Mayor Seaman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Proclamations and presentations. Item 7A are on our agenda. Tonight, we are recognizing Jim Carlock on his retirement and service to the city. Madam City Clerk, do you have the presentation? Oh, that was, you just, I'm sorry. Okay, I just read that for you. Thank you. Mr. Carlock, would you come up for, to the podium? And Chief Phillips? Would you like to speak? Chief Phillips, please?
Thank you, Mayor, council members. So this evening, we just want to thank and honor Community Service Officer Jim Carlock for 25 years of service with the city of Hermosa Beach. Jim Carlock started in September of 1999, has been assigned to the Community Services Division, worked everything that that position has to offer, trained new community service officers over the years, and been a leader in that division for more than two decades. Jim has been known for his ability to de-escalate, upset motorists. As all of you can imagine, nobody ever enjoys getting a parking ticket. It is a necessary evil in the parking world. But Jim was always able to talk to folks in a way that brought them a sense of calm and a sense of understanding. So we appreciate everything that Jim has done in his work in that role. In addition, as a community service officer, like all of our city employees, Jim's out in the field, in the street, observing, watching, seeing what's going on in the city. Jim's helped to locate stolen vehicles, provided assistance for animal control issues, and as I said, trained new service, uh, community service officers. So Jim is here with his wife Irma for, they've been married for 27, 28?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty, a lot, a lot of years. They've been married. And they're both still smiling, so it's a great marriage. So I'll end with just a fun fact, and hopefully he'll do the sign-off tonight when we give Mr. Carlock a moment to speak here. Is, uh, Jim Carlock is affectionately known as One-Paul-Nine. I'm not gonna try to say it his way, and the other employees in the room know what I'm talking about. One-Paul-Nine. That's been his call sign for his time as a community service officer. And Jim is known as the GOAT, greatest of all time, in the parking world. So we're gonna turn it over to Jim, and then we'll have some presentations, but really just thank you, thank you very much for your many years of service, and allow you to say a few words.
Thank you, Chief. I just wanted to say that working for the city has just been a great, great honor. And, you know, I call it Mayberry, because it's such a small town, and you kinda get to know everybody. And I'm just gonna reflect back to when I first, we got married, I was doing some waitering and some other stuff, and I said, "Well, I have a wife now." And in the Daily Breeze, any, well, you guys might be old enough. In the paper, there was an ad about a quarter inch thick, said, "Community Service Officer, City of Hermosa Beach, you know, public contact required." So I thought, "Why I have public contact? I'm a waiter. I was a bellman." So I went, took the test, graded out, number one. They hired one person. Twenty-five years later, here we are. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Jim. Jim. Excuse me, Jim, before you sit down, I have something for you.
Street parking pass?
No, I'm sorry, I can't do that. First of all, I'd like to say thank you so much for your service to the city. I really appreciate it. I know the city does, too. Kinda makes me sorry that you never gave me a ticket. I would've loved to have done that one time. I got certainly tickets from most of the other guys, but at any rate, thank you so much. This is a certificate for, of congressional recognition. An honor and celebration of your remarkable 25-year tenure of public service, and with sincere appreciation for your dedication to our community and to the families of Hermosa Beach. From Ted Lou. Thank you so very much. And this is from the Senate, State Senate. Says, "Presented Jim Carlock in recognition of your 25 years of dedicated service to the city of Hermosa Beach. Your professionalism in support of the community from November 24th, 1999 through November 2nd, 2024 is greatly appreciated. Warmest congratulations on your long career and well-earned retirement." Thank you. But wait, there's more. "A certificate of recognition from the California Legislature Assembly and recognition, and recognition and celebration of your 24 years of public service as community service officer for the city of Hermosa Beach, and with sincere appreciation for all your outstanding leadership and dedication to the South Bay." Thank you very much. And then? This is black, from Hermosa Beach. "The city of Hermosa Beach congratulates you on your retirement and extends to you our sincerest thanks and appreciation for your dedicated service, November 24th, 1999 through November 2nd, 2024." Mayor Rob Seaman, I really appreciate this very much. Thank you, sir. And I think, Mr. Phillips has-
Like you said, but wait, there's more.
All right. And I think this may have been by request, but we have the, the hat from, I believe that's from Hermosa Beach Little League. And I see Councilmember Jackson smiling, and I think the colors were intentional. And finally, a little bit of a tradition, but the Hermosa Beach street sign indicating Carlock Way. And on the back is "Community Services and your years of service to the city of Hermosa Beach." So if we'll, uh, we're gonna do a picture, and why don't we? We'll do one. One with the mayor, and then all department personnel following.
Why don't you come up? When do you guys have to run off?
Nope.
Just good. Good.
It's okay.
I do want to hear one more. Ready? All right. Next, Item 7B. Madam City Clerk, would you announce the presentation, please?
Proclamation declaring June 2025 as Pride Month in Hermosa Beach.
Thank you. May we have HB Pride Vice President Dominique Monchati, please, come to the podium to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Hello, Dominique.
Hello.
Welcome.
Thank you.
I would like to read this proclamation that we're going to be giving you this evening. This is a proclamation, excuse me, a proclamation recognizing June 2025 as LGBTQIA Pride Month. "In the month of June, we celebrate Pride Month and join together with our lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, and asexual community for, to celebrate their strength, courage, and perseverance. City of Hermosa Beach is committed to supporting visibility, dignity, and equality, equity, excuse me, for all people in the community regardless of their sexual orientation or gender identity. Whereas, many of the residents, students, city employees, and business owners within the city of Hermosa Beach who contribute to the enrichment of our city identity with the LGBTQIA community, and whereas various advancements have been made with respect to equitable treatment of the LGBTQIA community, but there continues to be opposition all around the world, making it important for cities like Hermosa Beach to stand up and show support for our residents who are affected. And whereas, LGBTQIA Pride Month is celebrated each year during the month of June to acknowledge its historical significance and commemorate the events of June 1969, when an uprising was staged in New York City at the Stonewall Inn against the harassment of LGBTQIA persons. And whereas, the rainbow flag, also known as the LGBTQIA pride flag, or gay pride flag, has been used since 1970 as a symbol of lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, and asexual pride in social movements. And whereas, lighting up Pier Plaza in rainbow colors and flying the rainbow flag at City Hall throughout the month of June further symbolizes the city's celebration of diversity and support for the LGBTQIA community. Now therefore, I, Rob Seaman, Mayor and City of Hermosa Beach, California, do hereby recognize the month of June 2025 as LGBTQIA Pride Month and invite everyone to recognize the achievements of the LGBTQIA community to celebrate our great diversity and to reflect on ways we can all live and work together with a commitment to mutual respect and understanding." Thank you. Would you like to speak at all?
Of course. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. On behalf of the Hermosa Beach Pride Organization, I would just like to thank you for your recognition of the LGBTQIAQ+ community, and we are pleased to live inside of a community that is representing equality. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Let me, oh, go away. Thank you very much, Mr. Monchati, and this is your proclamation.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Happy Pride.
Okay, so now we will move on to Item 8 on our agenda, City Manager Report. Steve Napolitano.
Thank you, Your Honor. I didn't know I had one until Ann told me I did, and I learned from my first day to do whatever Ann tells me to do. So I want to report to everybody. Good evening. And we have an upcoming Juneteenth holiday. This is a reminder that Juneteenth is June 19th. Reminder that in observance of this federal holiday, City Hall and the Community Center will be closed on Thursday, June 19th. Please note the following city operations impacted on that day. That includes street sweeping and parking on PCH will not be enforced, but all other parking regulations remain in effect. Trash collection services will continue as scheduled. Construction activities are prohibited. As always, our police and public works departments will remain available for non-emergency assistance. You may contact the police department at 310-524-2750. That's it for me, and now for our police update. Chief Phillips.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. So Mayor, council members, quick update. One thing we want to share is, we've talked before about the police department being- One thing we want to share is we've talked before about the police department being at full staffing, and that's currently the case. We have a few officers that are finishing field training. But with the full staffing and a few officers completing field training, we've recently been able to assign an officer full-time to what we call our Crime Impact Team. So this team consists of one sergeant and now one officer, a total of two. We hope to expand that team in the future. The objective of this team, they're separate from patrol, so the regular calls for service, they will respond to assist if it's something urgent. But their job is to focus on what is the urgent need? What is the crime trend? Where are we seeing things increasing, decreasing based on season, based on data? And that will be the focus of the Crime Impact Team. And also, what complaints? What feedback are we getting from the community? Is it stop signs? Is it the Strand? Is it bicycles? All of the things will all be wrapped into the Crime Impact Team. So we're happy to share that we have that position staffed, just started last week. So we're hoping to see some positive impact to crime in that respect. Do want to share with the council and the community that we will be hosting another DUI checkpoint in July. We don't have the specific date announced yet, but that will be coming soon. But as we saw a few months ago, we had a very successful DUI checkpoint to the point where the organization Mothers Against Drunk Driving asked if they could come to our next one. So we expect to see them here. We'll have that announcement coming out soon. That was thanks to the great work of our traffic team, our management analysts, and Sergeant McDermott, who wrote this grant. This is all grant-funded and will be staffed based on the grant funds. And lastly, just to share with council, this regular update that I'm giving now, we're looking at a more streamlined way of providing this information to council. And one thing, I'll just, I'll throw up an infographic, a document. This is something that we're working with the city manager's office on. This is some data, some information. This is a weak snapshot of crime reports, arrests, citations issued. This in combination with some of the other things that are high-level or notable that may be presented as a information report to city council saves some of the time. So this is something we're working on and will be bringing to council in the coming weeks, hopefully not months, in future council meetings. And lastly with that, I just want to let everyone know, a reminder to the community that we do have a thing called Community Crime Map that's connected to a program that does data analysis for us called LexisNexis. Anyone can go on to communitycrime map dot com, search for Hermosa Beach, buy our zip code or just by typing in the city, and you can provide your own filters of crime types, arrest types, dates, times, and those filters are all there. That's been there for some time, but just a reminder for the community that that's available. And with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council? Councilman Jackson? No? No? Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you, chief. And now let's move on to public comment. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comment cards in person only?
Yes, we do. The first is Sarah Harper. And the time is limited to two minutes and will be taken in person only, and a total of 30 minutes will be allocated for this comment period. As a reminder, another public comment period at the end of this meeting is reserved for those whose comments could not be heard during this first comment opportunity.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, residents of Hermosa Beach. I'm here to give the library announcements. I'd like to remind everyone again that our summer discovery program has begun, and that's available for all ages. To complete the Summer Discovery Challenge, you need to read three books and then complete three activities or read three more books. After that, you'll receive a book and a small prize, and you'll be entered into a drawing at the end of the summer. For the Friends of the Library have provided gift cards for every age level, the early learners, our school age, our teens, and our adults. Adults are entered for a prize online drawing once a week, but that's all the adults in the county, not just our library. So for our library, it's a smaller pool. You'll have a good chance of winning an Amazon gift card. And we have lots of great programs coming up. One of the activities you can complete is attending a program. So this Wednesday, we have the School of Astonishment. It's a magic show with a game show twist at 3 o'clock. Next Wednesday at 3 o'clock, we have an Adult 101 class for our teens called Food Can Be Fun. Want to eat healthier but don't like boring food? Come and learn ways to make snacks that are healthy and fun, especially for our teens ages 13 to 17. And then we also have for our Rainbow Parenting and Family Programs, next Saturday, June 21st, we have the Iwalani Music Show. It's an interactive family music concert for babies, toddlers, and preschoolers, guitar-led singing, movement, and child-friendly instruments, especially for ages zero to five with their parent or guardian. That's Saturday, June 21st at 10:30 a.m. It's always a great time. We get a great turnout, and we welcome everybody to attend. And then just a reminder that we will also be closed Thursday, June 19th for the Juneteenth holiday. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Next, we have Ken R.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmen. My name is Kenny Rogers, and I'm here on behalf of both myself, my wife Laura Rogers, to talk about parking permits. Laura and I bought our home at 34926 Street in 2020. We were initially drawn to purchase our Hermosa house by its proximity to the beach, but we have come to value it for much more than just the beach. We love Valley Park, the walkability of Hermosa, its small-town feel, and the sense of community we have with our neighbors, especially the ones in our alley in the back of the house. Since 2020, we have mostly lived here during the summer months and part of the fall and visited for occasional weekends and holidays. Occasionally, we have lived here with all four of our children, sometimes one, two, or three of them, depending on who has been away at college or in town working. Every year, the time we spend living in Hermosa gets longer. This year, we have lived here since mid-April. There are now four of us living and driving in Hermosa, and we are sharing three cars. When we first moved here, we bought parking permits and used various bills to prove residence. Recently, when I tried to get new permits, I was unable to do so because your policy changed, and one now needs to have both a driver's license and car registration with a Hermosa Beach address to get a permit. Admittedly, we have been part-time residents these last five years. We have another house in Westwood where our kids grew up, which is closer in proximity to our youngest son's high school and our aging parents, two of whom passed away since 2020, and one of whom is still ailing, is still alive but ailing. But despite being part-time residents, we consider ourselves assets to the Hermosa Beach community, as do our neighbors. We pay full-time property taxes. We frequent local businesses like Martha's and Brothers Burritos, which, by the way, sponsor my son's junior six-man volleyball team because we are such regular customers. When our backdoor neighbor Vic hosts annual neighborhood gatherings to meet with the Hermosa Beach Police, we attend. When we received an email about a neighbor's dog that was missing, I went out to try and find it and bring it home. We love Hermosa and are here tonight, and I'm here tonight to introduce myself and say that we would like our family and people like us to feel included in your thoughts as you make Hermosa Beach policies. Preventing people like us from getting a parking permit doesn't just make our lives harder, it sends a message. It says you're not really one of us. And I don't think that's the kind of message you want to send if you value being inclusive and neighborly. In closing, I've just changed my address on my license and registration, and now I do qualify for a permit. So I'm not standing up here tonight in my narrow self-interest, and I'm not just standing up here to talk about parking permits. I'm standing up for what I believe is right for our community, and I would welcome the opportunity to further discuss this with any or all of you council members. And just as a quick ending, aside from that, I did call Councilman Jackson to discuss this issue. He was nice enough to call me back. I thought that was very neighborly. While I didn't agree with what he said, I said I would come and speak with you at council and express my opinion. So I appreciate that, Councilman Jackson.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Next, we have Nancy.
Hi, Nancy Schwaback. Good evening. Thanks for having me. I submitted an e-comment apparently into the wrong agenda item. I went into the study session, and so sorry, I hope you'll go chase it down there. But I'm here to talk about CIP 114, the Greenwich Village North Utility Undergrounding District. And I'm here on behalf of the association that was formed to finance the upfront costs. We're at a critical time in this district. We're 10 years into the process, and it's been almost five years since the property owners voted to form the district. There have been delays, fingers can be pointed, but we are where we are. We need you, city council, to approve issuance of the assessment bonds at your July 22nd meeting. A lot of things need to happen before then, but I believe they are doable. They're outlined in my e-comment, if you can find them at the last meeting, and I implore you to take them to heart and direct staff accordingly. We've been working very closely with Joe and his staff. They're wonderful, they're marvelous, and we just need to help them get across the finish line. An important point is to return to the construction budget, the city administration fee, which was a plug number in the budget, and we request not be charged for a lot of reasons, five years having something to do with that. If we miss the July 22nd date, we will lose nine to 12 months as we get city council approval, obtain a new engineer's report, circulate a ballot for a supplemental assessment, obtain new bids for the civil work and the utilities, and issue bonds. These will cost more money. We'll need to go get that from our property owners who have already contributed almost $300,000. The new bids will likely be higher, and it's possible the district will fail. If you support undergrounding, now is the time for the city to step up and show residents that it is possible. Thank you for your attention to this matter and your service to our city.
Thank you.
Mayor, we did not receive any other speaker cards for a general public comment.
Okay, great. And there's no one online? Oh, wait, one more.
Yeah. I didn't turn in a card. Good evening, Dave Peterson, Hermosa Beach City Treasurer. I just wanted to share a bit more context on an item that Brandon and I put on the consent calendar, item D. This is a straightforward revision of our city investment policy that does two things. Number one, it cleans up the language from finance director to administrative director, the new titling. It also makes a small but impactful change to the language for investing in negotiable CDs, which are a notable part of our investment program. Our current policy references a voluntary rating, the IDC, that has been in our investment policy since at least 2016, and honestly, I'm a bit unclear on its genesis. IDC is one of several private, third-party agencies where any rating or engagement with them is voluntary unless otherwise required. It's not required by state code. It's not in the investment policies of our neighboring cities, nor is it in the CMTA sample investment policy. Since it's voluntary and has limited market share, it does significantly limit our current investment ability in CDs. We'd like to increase that. This amendment cleans up the language for negotiable CDs by removing this IDC requirement, and it also reinforces our coverage and investment limits specific to FDIC insurance limits in a way that makes additional restrictions or ratings superfluous. The foundation of our investment program is strong. I'll continue to review our program for incremental changes and improvements and report back as I see them, and of course, be back in 2026 to reaffirm this policy. So I appreciate your support of that consent calendar item. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'll close the public comment and open this to city council member comments. I would like to go first at this point, if you don't mind, to address some of the things that were just spoken about here. Mr. Rogers, I appreciate your concern and your problem that you had with parking permits. You know, over the last three or four years, we've, you're aware of this, maybe you're not because you're kind of new to Hermosa. We've tried very hard to fix the parking permit program, make it better, make it more efficient, make it more fair for people who actually really desperately need the parking. And I think we've done a lot of good work, and I think every year we were supposed to review it and so on, and we've tried to do that. And then sometimes, like for instance, this last year, we did not come up to review it until already issuing permits, which is really bad timing, and I have no explanation for that. But at our previous meeting, we brought up an item, some council members together brought up an item, that we should have this review sooner rather than later this next time, and try and get this more comprehensive discussion on new tweaks that we can do to the ordinance to fix it, make it better. There's always room for improvement. And I think in some places, perhaps, we've gone a little overboard, and you know, there's things that we can do to make it better. But in the meantime, at our last meeting, we also requested that we can take a closer look at some particular items and loosen up a little bit on situations perhaps like yours, where people come to us and they say, "I don't fit in this category because of license," or "my car is a rental," or "it's a company car and I can't change the registration." There's always some particular things that just don't fit. And so I would like to say to you at this point that the ordinance, as written three years ago or four years ago, names the city manager as the ultimate in protest or a request for some relief, and that is still the case. So if you want to, I would appreciate it if you could present your situation to the city manager or to the parking department, who will pass it on to the city manager, I'm sure. And then he can take a look at it and make a decision as to whether or not, you know, we can make an exception. And we can do that now. We have also dedicated ourselves to having our next review before October of this year. That gives us several months before the issuance of new permits in April of next year, and so that these little tweaks can be addressed. And maybe we can get it into the ordinance now ahead of time, and then so when we issue the new set, it'll be very clear to everyone what the new rule is. So I do appreciate your comments, and if you could do that, that'd be wonderful.
I appreciate that.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Let's see. I guess that's it for my comments. Does anyone else have any comments to, on public comment? Yes?
Just clarification from staff regarding the undergrounding district and the bond issuance. Are we on track for that? I don't know if it's Brandon or Joe, or is this, can I get briefed on this offline? Just want to make sure we have everything lined up.
So we receive bids from, we are reviewing them. They're under review. They're still under review. We have to determine who the low bid is, and the low bid is higher than the estimate that was originally in when the bond or when the district was formed. So we do need to make sure the low bid is in fact the apparent low bid, or that we can move forward with it, and then rectify what the overall costs are, determine whether or not the district is either going to need to reassess district residents or provide additional funding through another means so that we could then come to council in July to seek council authority to issue the bonds. So there's a couple more steps that have to happen. Staff is doing everything we can to expedite the review and move things forward, but there is work that needs to be done that's ongoing right now.
Thank you for that update.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, Councilmember Francois.
Thank you. I really wasn't going to say anything, but just regarding those people that do have complaints about the structure or the bureaucratic thing that's been created regarding parking permits, it was implemented just over a year ago. I voted against it. I was not in favor of it. And we had it on our agenda several weeks ago, and we could have taken some action at that time to take some swift moves to liberalize it a little bit, and it wouldn't have taken anything. But I didn't have enough votes on the council to do that. But I encourage everyone to keep the pressure on to this city council because we will be having it on our agenda in, like the mayor stated, in October, where hopefully we can scrap the whole thing and start over or come up with some major changes to it to relieve the undue process that's involved that people have to go through to get permits. So, thank you.
Any other comments? All right, I'll close the city council comments.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes? Oh, I'm sorry. Councilman Jackson? Please.
Since parking has now, since parking has now been a topic, you know, in 2021 is when this council started making changes to the parking permit program. We were specific in '21, and subsequent councils have approved this, that the parking permits were permanent Hermosa Beach residents, period. If you had a second home or a third home, or you're a property owner but not a resident, then you were not eligible for the program. Subsequent to that, we've had some changes, tweaks to the proof of residency component, and that- And that was, that has subsequently evolved into the car registration and a driver's license to your Hermosa Beach address that's consistent with California law. And that's something that this council approved. And I don't want to get into back and forth, but this isn't something new or completely onerous. We've issued over 5,000 parking permits this cycle, and we've had a couple dozen people that have complained. And those folks weren't eligible per the criteria that this council has had in place since 2021. So I don't want to litigate the whole thing, but I just want to make sure the record was clear. This isn't something new that we just came up with. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor.
Yes.
I just want to point out that I was with Dean on making some changes to this parking plan to make it easier for people to get permits. And there's an election a year from November. People in the parking district can decide then who they want to support if they want a third vote for this. So that'll be the opportunity to really make change. So in addition to getting a license and getting a registration, you can voice your opinion through the ballot box. So good luck.
Thank you. Is there no other comments? So I'll close the councilman comments and move on to updates from city council ad hoc subcommittees and standing committee delegation and delegates and alternates. Are there any updates from ad hoc committees, subcommittees? None? Councilman Jackson? No? All right, I'll close that out and move on to the consent calendar. The city manager has already recommended, and we have already pulled item 11I, and that will be moved to the next meeting on June 24th. 11I. And then, so do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Motion to approve the balance, Mr. Mayor?
Seconded.
Seconded. Motion seconded. Madam City Clerk.
Could I just make a quick comment before we
Yes.
approve the consent calendar? Item 11J, the temporary use of events, I did vote against it. But I am here to go along with the consent calendar and vote for it. And I guess we hashed it out several times. It's a shame it's taken this long. I'm glad to see that the special events is still going on. Had my colleagues expressed that there was a problem with alcohol, we could have had it resolved sooner. But I'm here to support this and not pull it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Madam City Clerk, would you please open the voting?
Councilmember Francois?
Yes.
Councilmember Keegan?
Aye.
Councilmember Jackson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem D. Toy?
Aye.
Mayor Seaman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great. On to public hearings, and there are none. And so on to future agenda items.
I think we have municipal matter item.
14A. 13A. Sorry, we did that. 13A. Ah, excuse me. Sorry. 13A. Update the process and procedures for review on on-sale alcohol beverage conditional use permits. Planning City Manager Alexis Orpeza.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Alexis Orpeza, Planning Manager. This item does pertain to the review process and procedures for on-sale alcoholic beverage conditional use permits. Before I get into the review procedures and process, just want to give a very brief overview of conditional use permits for the general public. CUPs are generally required for uses that are desired in a zone, but due to the nature of the use or variations, there's, a conditional use permit is required to ensure that the use is compatible with the area and the zone. And an example of uses that requires CUPs are alcoholic beverage establishments for on-sale and off-sale alcohol. The zoning code also establishes formal procedures for the revocation of CUPs. And the city council in 2011 implemented procedures that allowed for supplemental citywide review on a semi-annual basis. And this process was created twofold. One was to create transparency in the criterion for when a CUP would be called up for review, as well as predictability in the review process and having it done on a regular basis. So that process again began in 2011 and has been modified over the years, increasing in frequency from a semi-annual basis to a triennial review processes, which is what we operate under today. The process today occurs over the course of two meetings. The first meeting, staff prevents an information report providing data on the alcohol establishments and their compliance with the CUP criteria, which is outlined in attachment one of this agenda item. The data provided in these two meetings does not change. The first is really an informational item. The second is a notice public hearing in which the planning commission can decide to call a CUP up for formal review. The zoning code, as mentioned, does establish formal procedures for the review process. And although we have a prescribed triennial review process, the city staff are empowered to bring up CUPs for review. One example of this occurred in January of this year. 11121 Aviation Boulevard CUP was called up for review by the chief of police at that time. And the planning commission reviewed the matter and determined that the CUP should be revoked. And this all occurred outside of that regularly scheduled triennial review process. So subsequent to that revocation hearing, the triennial review process occurred in February and March of this year. Staff, along with the planning commission, believe that the process for review provides clarity and should be maintained, but does believe the overall process should be modified to streamline the review process and minimize the amount of staff time spent allocated to this. And so the planning commission, along with staff, recommended modifying the process to establish an annual review process instead of the triannual review process. And that review process would run from October 1st through September 30th each year. And the formal review would occur in November. And that time period was selected in order to allow for the peak season of visitors, for that review to occur after that. With that being said, the, again, zoning code still allows for review process or revocations to occur outside of that annual review. The other changes that were recommended by the planning commission was to eliminate the mandatory two-step review process to clarify reporting data from the LA County Fire Department, specifically to eliminate calls for service, which don't provide sufficient data to illuminate whether a CUP has been in violation or not due to HIPAA laws. So minimizing the data that we're collecting from Los Angeles County Fire Department was another change. And then finally, the planning commission wanted to clarify that the community development director may also call up a CUP for review. And then at this juncture, I do want to hand this over to interim city manager, Napolitano. I think he, there is an alternative recommendation that we'd like you to consider.
Thank you, Your Honor and council. I am inserting myself here on behalf of staff. I think that they are doing a great job by following exactly what the planning commission discussed and everything. But as we met one-on-one and in reviewing this myself, I am making a pitch, and I believe I'm making the pitch on behalf of staff, on behalf of the community frankly, because of the burden that this really puts on them. You've got a community development department that is trying to get an LCP adopted, which hasn't been done for years, obviously. Housing element, zoning code, builder's remedy, sea level rise, all sorts of things they have to deal with on a daily basis. The police department is highly impacted by this because all the information they have to follow up on do this. Over 70 businesses are affected by this. And this is a review of over 70 businesses three times a year now, with the idea of doing it one time a year. My pitch to council is that it be done on a complaint basis only. There's a structure in the code already regarding complaints, how they should be followed up on, when they're followed up on. Obviously, that was done with the sushi restaurant. It wasn't part of the three-term-a-year review. They were able to bring that to council. The CUP was revoked, was brought to session. Again, these are things that it really doesn't make any sense to drag businesses in who are, have no complaints, are in compliance. And having to put all that, the information together and drag them into planning commission meetings, it just seems like a big burden on staff, the businesses, and the community. And I would recommend that council look at and consider doing it on a complaint basis only with the structure that has already been established regarding complaints that's in the ordinance.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have anything else, Seth?
That's it. Otherwise, I'm available to answer questions.
Great, thank you. We'll take it back to council questions then? Excuse me. We'll take it back to council questions. Are there any questions of staff? Questions or comments? Yes, Councilman D. Toy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the report and the alternative being proposed. Just some of the criterion that, for the CUP review standards, you know, there's the two times in six months for violation of operating hours, two times for ABC violations. And then there's two times for criminal citations of staff, two times for serious crime of premises, and then only one for overcrowding. So I was just wondering, and this is a carryover from previous, but just why the discrepancy there?
You ask a great question. This is a carryover, and I believe in 2011, this overcrowding was an issue that was prevalent. I don't believe that has continued to today, but I think that's what influenced this number, this one violation being cause for revocation.
Okay. And I'm putting the police on the spot here. Is this an issue that you've been seeing? Or is this, would you be, you know, amenable to possibly just making this in line with the rest of them as two in six months? Or am I oversimplifying this?
No, I think the recommendation by Ms. Orpeza and city manager Napolitano is accurate. We now have the ability and the agility to see these things on a complaint basis. And as things pop up, as we learn of problems, occasionally alcohol beverage control will visit. And if they find a business that's in violation and they issue a citation, they communicate with us. So with this, we'll still be able to respond to any businesses that are not operating safely and take action, bring it either to the planning commission or the council.
So with the alternative that was proposed, this would just, would it still be one or would it be two? Or for the overcrowding situation specifically?
That would still be done. So as proposed in the staff report, if it's overcrowding, that would be reviewed. If there's a violation of overcrowding and we know about it, we will know about it, we're going to bring that to planning commission before the scheduled annual review. And that's the proposal in the staff report. The alternative proposal is to do it on complaint basis. So with that, it would come to the planning commission immediately. So with the violation of...
So any one of these complaints in a six-month window? Or would it still be the two in the six-month window would go to planning?
It would be the two violations of, as listed in the table. It'd be the two violations, some being the hours. It would be two violations of that. It would go to planning commission then.
Okay.
And that, I don't want to speak out of turn, but that would not prevent us from bringing an information report to planning commission to let everyone know, hey, there's a violation of business hours. This is only the first one. If it doesn't happen again in the next six months or a year, no harm, no foul.
Okay, perfect. All my questions. Thank you.
I have a question, sir, while you're right here.
Yes, sir.
Having been on the planning commission during most of this, writing this law and reviewing it and changing it, it's my understanding, and I want to just make sure it's clear from your previous discussion, it's always been at, well, how can I put this? It's always been that if the police department felt something was serious enough to induce a review of any kind, not just revocation, that the police department can do that at any time.
Yes, that's...
Any kind of action that was severe enough that the police department felt, we need to talk about this right away, regardless if it's triennial or biannual or singular, whatever it is, you could bring that to us right away?
Yes.
Okay. And that would still be the case?
Correct.
Of course?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. That's all. Thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Francois.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that city manager is taking a look at this with new ears and eyes and coming up with a modified recommendation. It seems logical. I'm just curious how it developed to this. I took a look at a few old triennial reviews, and it seems like, I can understand the large amount of staff it takes. It's gone into a lot of other things than what the requirements were. For example, keeping track of people that pulled over with DUIs and asking where they had their last drink. It seems like that's kind of unreliable data. But I guess if we're going to go ahead and scrap this, it's a moot point at this. But it just seems like that a lot of, that's just an example. There were other things in these reports that didn't necessarily directly relate to CUP violations. So, but I just wanted to make that comment about staff time. With regards to complaints, so we will keep track of complaints. And when the complaints, when someone complains about something, it gets investigated, and then it's determined if there's a problem, it would come before the planning commission for a possible review. That is, that how it would work?
Correct.
On a complaint-driven system?
So when complaints are received, then there's an investigation that's done to substantiate whether it's a true violation of a CUP or not. And then it would be reviewed internally between planning and this department, and then scheduled for a hearing if needed.
Okay. And what are the examples that people would be able to complain about regarding operating hours as a category? What would, what would be that type of complaint that you would receive regarding operating hours?
It would be a business open perhaps after the specified hours of the conditional use permit. That could be one. I mean, they could take various forms, right? Could be noise after hours. It just depends on what
Right.
the complaining party observes.
Would an example of a complaint be if there's some requirement that they must stay open 30 minutes after the last drink is served? So what could a complaint be from, coming from someone if they thought that they were forced to remove the premises without having 30 minutes to, after they were served their drink? Would that be considered an operating hour complaint?
Sorry.
No.
No.
Well, there is a requirement that they must stay open 30 minutes after they serve the last drink, right?
That's not true.
No.
So when their, when their operating hours end, they're done. And usually what happens is bars, bars are typically having a last call. So if 2:00 AM is their, their closing time, they're doing last call at 1:00 or 1:15. Drinks are, drinks are down and the place needs to be empty.
But they must, they must have a window of 30 minutes from when they serve their last drink to when they close, correct?
I don't think you're required to have 30-minute window to close.
Okay, I was under the impression they did.
Their last call is up to them. So they can, they can determine when they're going to serve their last drink. Usually what they're doing is giving everybody, hey, if you want one more drink, it's 1:15, it's last call. And your drinks, they got to be gone, and everybody's got to be out here at 2:00 AM. So...
Okay, so that's interesting. So we don't, the CUP doesn't regulate when the last call is. The CUP regulates when they close.
Close.
And they can serve a drink one minute before they close?
They could try, but they're not going to, you're not going to finish your drink, and they typically wouldn't do that.
Yeah.
So I'm not aware of any of the establishments in my experience downtown that are doing that.
So if that thing needed to be corrected, we would have to deal with that somehow.
Yeah, if you wanted to order last call, that would have to be, I'm going to guess that that would have to be written in the CUP. That last call would have to be at this time. You have to stop serving alcohol at this time. I don't know if you can control that. I just know we can control closing hours, but...
Okay, thank you. You have any comments on that?
I was making a comment to the city.
Okay, all right, cool. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Anything else?
It looks like a good move, and I do think, you know, reducing the amount of effort we're putting into this will keep us in line with builder's remedy and other items that we need to spend more time on than CUP hearings, so I think it's a good move. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Jackson, any more comments? No?
Have we had public participation yet?
Not yet. Just last call for comments, for questions, excuse me, questions of staff.
Last call.
No questions, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, then, let's move on to public comments. Madam City Clerk.
For this item, each speaker is limited to three minutes. We did not receive any speaker cards for this item.
All right, and no one in Zoom, on Zoom?
We do not have any virtual hands raised via Zoom.
Okay, so we'll close the public comment and go to council comments and deliberation. Would anyone like to start?
I'll start.
Councilman Keegan.
I think the staff report was good, and I think the final recommendation I'm leaning towards, so...
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Next? Yes?
Yeah, I, I do support eliminating these triennial reviews, but this is going to be involved in changing this redline procedures that, that's been submitted tonight. Is that correct? So we're going to have to have that changed and then have it come back again? Is that how that's going to work, or?
I don't think this is, this isn't an ordinance reading like that, this is a policy procedure.
Well, the, the one you have redlined here still has the annual review, so that would have to be changed.
I haven't been allowed to sign into that yet.
What's that?
I haven't been allowed to sign into that yet, so. I can't see that redline.
Well, it's not in red, I'll tell you. It says redline, and it's underlined.
I can't see that.
I guess to accommodate...
Are you able to put the alternative up on the screen from the PowerPoint?
What's that, Mike?
I just asked to get the alternative up on the screen since, so we can kind of compare.
No, I'll take a look at it.
This is the alternative that would eliminate the fixed review at planning commission, but it would allow us, it directs us to maintain the procedures for administrative guidance, and then...
In terms of the complaints, number of complaints?
Complaints, correct. And then we would maintain the other clarifications that...
Yes. This follows that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other comments, discussion, deliberation?
Just one question for my colleagues. Do you think overcrowding should be bumped up to two versus the one that's already in there for initiating all this for incidents in a six-month period? Because these criterion would still fall in effect for the alternative plan, that's what I just want to clarify. Yes, seeing heads nod. So just to make them all the same, everything would be twice in six months, including overcrowding, just seeing if there's support for that.
Sounds good.
My comment would be to leave it the way it is. The most important part of this, I believe, is to, rather than have a triennial review, that this is by a complaint basis only. And so the level of severity that controls that complaint, I think, should stay the same as it is. I don't think there's any really problem with changing any of those to one or two in six months and periods and so on. All the years that I've spent on planning commission, I've been through a dozen triennial reviews, and at the beginning, it was important. It, it was necessary and effective because there were quite a bit of complaints, and in fact, you know, Francois, you've mentioned the idea of asking the people on a DUI, a local DUI, like in the parking lot practically, where they had their last drink. It wasn't just DUIs, by the way, it was people who were in, having a fight on the plaza.
Yeah.
Which happened much more often in those days. So when police were making that arrest, it was my suggestion, actually, to ask them, while you're interviewing the two people in the fight, you might ask them, where do, where were you guys? Where did you have your last drink? Because quite often, they were over the limit legally. And so I thought it would be important information to know where it was, that you were possibly over-served, so we could have a, get an idea of where that action was happening more often than not. It was, after a while, determined that that information was unreliable, because after all, the people were, were, they were drunk, they were over the line. So when you ask a drunk person, where did you have your last drink? He's likely to say, uh, and look at the building he's standing in front of, or, or say, yeah, the last thing he can remember, which is not always accurate. And so I had to agree with that, but it was my suggestion in the first place, and I was trying to help. I thought it would be good information to put into the report that we made 200 arrests last year, and 180 of them said they, they got drunk at so-and-so, or whatever. And it turned out to be, it made more sense that it was unreliable information, and that it doesn't really help anything, and it just kind of complicates the report and makes it more difficult and so on. So I was more than happy to eliminate it, but once it was in the process, it stayed there. So I'm inclined to agree with the fact that this is going to greatly reduce staff time, planning commission time, although they're all volunteers, of course, but they, they do so, they have so much work to do. The planning commission staff has so much work to do. This would be a great savings of time and money to eliminate the triennial process and, and have it on a complaint basis. So I think we should say, leave the complaints, the number of complaints per time period and so on the same, and just simply go from triennial to complaint basis. Would be my recommendation, and what I would be in favor of. Thank you.
I have a question.
Is that a motion?
I have a question for...
In a moment. Go ahead.
I have a question for Councilmember Detoy. Were you suggesting, for example, you look at the CUP review standards, reducing these number of incidents from two to one to trigger a review, or four in a 12-month period instead of, I mean, what were you suggesting as far as those criteria go? Were you suggesting on lowering them?
No, I was going to increase the overcrowding citation to two to match the rest of them. Questionably, you know, five extra people in a business, well, can still be dangerous. Serious crime on a premises indicating lack of adequate security, two of those in six months is allowed, so before review. I just think that, you know, to streamline everything...
So maybe remove that, lower that to one for a serious crime?
Or just keep them all to, all to two. Everyone else is two. I don't understand why...
I mean, right now, it's two in a, in a six-month period. Would it be better to make it, increase that period to 12 months and say, two in a 12-month? Or, I mean, are you suggesting moving those things around?
No, I was only suggesting increasing overcrowding citation to two to match the rest of them, which have been carryovers for many, many years.
Okay. I appreciate your opinion of streamlining it, but I'm not sure it really needs to be streamlined or everything match. These standards were set by, largely by the police department, I think, years ago when we started this triennial review. Ask people, ask questions about, well, how often should we do this, and what, what should that be, and so on. And, and those, those have worked quite well for a very long time, so I don't see any reason really to change them now, but just to simply say, instead of bringing this up three times a year and going through this whole process, which quite often is an open and shut deal, after months and hours of work and so on and so forth, we come up and say, well, there is nothing to report, and thank you very much, and then we move on, and we do it again in, in, and then, in four more months. So I, again, I think I would go back to my original idea that I, I think we should leave all of the time periods and violations the way they are now, and just simply go from triennial to on a complaint basis. And so that would be my motion then.
Your Honor, just to clarify, your motion would be to adopt the alternative as recommended?
Yes.
Yes.
I mean, forsaken moving this along, I'll second it with the proposal of the friendly amendment to move overcrowding citation to two.
To what move? Change what?
Overcrowding citation to two.
Two in six months?
Correct.
Well, if it...
As long as there's no concerns from our police department, who mostly enforces...
That's a good question. No problem with that? All right.
I mean, if it was one, is that a serious fire hazard?
On that basis, I'll, I'll accept the friendly amendment. And, and do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion to second. No further discussion.
My only other question I have is, I believe this redline procedure and process needs to be revised, and I, I'm assuming that it would be revised according to the motion, right? I mean, that's, because right now, we can't approve this because it still has annual review in it, so I'm assuming that this is going to be revised.
He's saying the language.
Do you have the alternative on your screen?
No, what we have, we have on...
Right there.
Yeah, but no, I'm talking about the actual redline version that has the existing one with crossouts to change it to an annual review.
Check with the city attorney here.
Number three says incorporate updates to the procedures.
Yeah, let's find out from the city attorney what is going to happen with this document that I'm looking at here.
You can just direct a change right now, and I think that's been, that's proposed.
So the motion's appropriate and...
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam City Clerk, would you call a vote, please?
Councilmember Francois?
Yeah, it looks like our, these scribes working for voting, but I vote yes. Yes.
Councilmember Keegan?
Aye.
Councilmember Jackson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Detoy?
Aye.
Mayor Saman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much. Now on to 13B. Purchase of the Peregrine Technologies for Real-Time Crime Center. Is there a staff report? Sorry.
PowerPoint? How do you... Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. We're here to talk about the purchase of Peregrine Technologies as we continue to move forward with the implementation of our mobile real-time crime center. Get started. City Hermosa Beach secured $963,000 in federal funding to establish a mobile real-time crime center aimed at enhancing law enforcement response and community safety. The real-time crime center is going to integrate cameras, operate on, on an operating platform, along with additional advanced technology on vehicles to provide real-time information for public safety operations. At Hermosa Beach, we have multiple data systems. Currently, these data systems are not linked together, and due to that, it requires significant time, training, and effort to use each program. Peregrine's an advanced analytic platform that provides a single point of access. It offers data integration, search and information retrieval, advanced analytics, data management, collaboration, and access control. It is a one-stop solution to data integration. It will integrate data from our CAD, RMS, body worn and dash, dash camera footage, our ALPRs, which is our automated license plate readers, our video systems, our citation system, and our document repository system. This will help address demand for increased transparency as well. The real-time crime center is included in fiscal year 2024 and '25. Those adopted budget and recommend purchase will be funded entirely by the available remaining budget by the secured federal grant. The staff recommends to the council to approve a professional services agreement with Peregrine Technologies for multi-platform integration software for a one-year subscription term with an option to pay for a second-year subscription at a not-to-exceed total amount of $122,815, and to authorize the city manager to execute and the city clerk to attest to the proposed agreement, subject to approval by the city attorney. I think that's the... I'm available for questions if you want to...
Thank you. Council questions of staff?
Of course. Go ahead.
I have one, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, sir. Thank you for the brief. You mentioned collaboration. Does this allow us to better collaborate with our neighbors? Is that part of this system?
It does. Several, several of our South Bay agencies, as well as Southern California agencies, are currently utilizing the Peregrine Technologies as well. So the data that is input or taken into their system becomes accessible to our system. So that, it's, it kind of builds on itself.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Councilman Detoy?
Thank you. I know it's in the staff report, but for those who didn't read it, and it's always a concern from our residents, where does the data go? Who controls it? Is it secure, et cetera?
Yes, the data, the data is secured. It's going to be accessible by, by our department, utilized by our crime analysts, detectives, and police personnel. We already have the data. This, this system will bring that data into what we like to call one pane of glass, making it accessible off the single pane, rather than having to go to all of our various data systems, which was time-consuming, and to, to be honest, is not streamlined. So this will streamline it for us. So in the incident, in the instance of a, a critical incident of any type, officers and detectives and analysts in our Incident Command Center, or our EOC, if it was that, at that level, would be able to operate on this pane of glass and have everything that we have data-oriented in one system, and we can pull from that. So it's also going to help our crime analysts with, you know, you know, annual reports, and to be able to provide updates related to, you know, crime reports and citations and things like that.
Perfect, thank you.
Councilman Francois?
Thank you. The $122,000 is for one year, and then, excuse me?
Total, that would be a total of two years, not to exceed for two years, I believe, is what the report said.
Not to exceed, yeah.
For us, if we do choose to go to a second...
So with this recommendation, when it's time for the second year, you come back to us, or is this for two years?
It would come from the federal funding.
So, okay, that was my next question. So the $963,000 grant covers these first two years?
Yes, sir, if we were to choose to go to the second-year option.
So then, when it comes to the third year, does that mean that there's no more grant money for that?
Well, there's no guarantee of a third year if we don't like the first two, so it would be hard to forecast that we were going to have a third year without actually implementing the program and, and getting through the first two years, but considering...
Right, but once we get, once we get through those first two, do we go and apply for more funding? Would that be the process, or?
As, for, for us, we're always looking for more federal funding, or, or state funding, right, for grants, especially related to real-time crime center or crime, crime fighting in general. So we would, we would continue to work towards that. We also have other inter-agency assets that we could pull from if we needed to.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more questions of staff?
Question.
Councilman Keegan?
So option two is for $62,000, so you think future years would continue at that level, or you think it would go down, or do you think, would this be like an annual item we're going to be taking up, or what kind of metrics do you, will you guys give reports on how effective this thing is, and, you know, whether it's worth $60,000, or...
Yeah, I think, I think we would have an idea of how beneficial the platform is after, after the first year and a half, moving into, you know, through year two.
Okay.
So I anticipate that it's going to be fairly effective, especially in terms of streamlining response and investigations.
Councilman Jackson? Questions of staff?
No, I'm sorry, I'm just scratching my head.
I'm sorry, what?
He was just scratching his head. Scratching his head.
I know. Good timing on the, on the hand motion, but I, did you have any questions of staff? I'm trying not to leave you out. I apologize because you're offline, you're online. Sometimes I sort of forget to look at the screen to ask for questions, so you're, you're good? No questions?
Yeah, if you'll hear me, I'll have a question. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, great, thank you. Appreciate that. All right, no more questions of staff. All right, no more questions of staff, let's open this to a public comment. Madam City Clerk?
Mayor, we did not receive any speaker cards for this item. Moving over to Zoom, if you would like to provide public comment on item 13B, now is the time to raise your virtual hand. And mayor, we do not have any virtual hands raised.
Great, thank you so much, Madam City Clerk. Then we'll go back to council comments and deliberation. Any deliberation, motions, et cetera?
I'll make a motion to approve staff recommendation to purchase this system.
I'll second that. Beat you to it, man.
That's why I got him by nose.
That's okay, you're, you're welcome to second it. Okay, it's been moved and seconded, if there's no more deliberation. Madam City Clerk, would you call the vote, please?
Councilmember Francois?
Yes.
Councilmember Keegan?
Aye.
Councilmember Jackson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem D. Toy?
Aye.
Mayor Saman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. We'll go to item 13C. Madam City Clerk?
Item 13C, purchase of automated license plate readers for real-time crime center and parking enforcement operations.
Staff report, sir?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the slides are coming up shortly. This will be deja vu, a lot of this information is the same. So this is another large chunk of our real-time crime center that's the grant funding, funding from Ted Lu's office. So with previous council actions, we have council approved the receipt of the grant for the real-time crime center. We have purchased some equipment and installation, that was our mobile data computers, and we're also working on parking enforcement operations. So when this grant was applied for, there was an element written in the application to incorporate ALPRs, automated license plate readers, into the parking vehicles as a dual purpose. So this is another mechanism to feed into the same data systems that Captain Cahalan was just discussing, but these parking ALPRs can also serve a parking function, and it's all within the scope of the grant. So on January 14th of this year, council approved some changes to the parking environment and to move from several disparate systems in the, the parking process, parking permits, how parking permits are reviewed by community service officers in the field into one single system with TurboData, also authorized citywide deployment of the Park Mobile Pay-By app, which is in the city now, and updates on the parking enforcement technology roadmap. So we had to start with the foundation, change the systems, the data systems that everything's built on, and now we're starting to build up from there. This slide is a little hard to review, but as you can see, the first portion there was the upgrade of the, the systems I was just talking about was included in, I'm sorry, completed in April of '25. Moving all of the meters to the Pay-By app, expected to be done June of this year, so soon, now, this month. We're working on the ALPRs, which is the third image you see there, also some of the mobile stations, the, the pay stations, and getting rid of the, the classic, some are coin base, some take credit card, the old meter heads, and getting those out of the city. So we've already had the background on the real-time crime center funding, and this is again part of that citywide integration of various systems. It's all going to feed into the same thing that we just talked about with the Peregrine Technologies and give our officers the ability to use all of this in a mobile real-time crime center. So the data system, again, yes, it's serving a parking purpose, but it's doubling as a crime-fighting purpose as well. So there was extensive research on what system would be best for this purpose, and we've worked with cities such as Newport Beach, Beverly Hills, University of Southern California, Chapman University, things that will build onto the TurboData system, which is the foundation, and what was found is the solution which is best is Genetek, used by several cities nearby, and Genetek is working with a installer, but this is a system that will tie in to the parking platform for the ALPRs. These ALPRs, they, they get constant reads, and if there is a hit, so that is if a vehicle is stolen, if it's reported using a violent crime, if it's something that is a, a missing person, it can give an alert to community service officers, police officers, anyone who's signed into the system, it will alert them that you have a hit, there's a vehicle that you may want to take a look at. All of the hot lists are pulled into our crime center. Some of these hot lists can be just pulled from the National Crime Information Center, or it can also be entered manually. So if we have detectives working on a case and they have a specific known suspect plate, they can enter that as a manual hot list that all pulls into our system. Currently, our parking enforcement officers are still using the, I'll say antiquated method of chalking tires, driving by and manually chalking a tire, and if the chalk is still there in the time limit, they'll come back and they'll enforce the parking violation. With this, the ALPRs are capturing essentially a GPS tag on that plate, where it was at at this point in time. If that vehicle drives by several hours later and it identifies through the image that that vehicle has not moved, and it's, it's smart enough to know the difference of, you know, if I move from spot A to spot B and they're, they're literally next to each other, the system will know. So if someone did move their car and they're not in violation of the hour limit, they're not going to be enforced for that parking violation. And this replaces some of the, the manual checks of, do they have a valid permit? All that's in the same TurboData system. And this is moving into the future. This is what we think our parking environment's going to look like. It's the digital, excuse me, digital chalking, which I just talked about. All of the things are automated and then in the handhelds of our community service officers. So with this, this does tie into our existing ALPRs. We currently have 14 fixed. We have mobile ALPRs in our police cars. We have a policy that addresses the use of the ALPRs, who can access it. They're required to have training, they're required to acknowledge the department policy. We do audits on this, so this is all within the policy and the training that we provide. We have several systems, but again, this is all going to tie into one. We have Vigilant, which is Motorola, that's a one-year retention on data. Flock, based on their product, they have a 30-day retention, and with this Genetek, we're looking at a three-month retention on the ALPR data. And I already talked about the policies. And so with that, we are recommending, if council would, if council agrees, to approve the purchase of the ALPRs for the parking solution, and this is again for a, a three-year term, not to exceed the amount of $210,000 with the approval of council and city attorney. And that's the last slide, but I do want to just make sure that credit is recognized and given to management analyst Ken Bales, who has put many hours into this research, worked with a lot of different agencies, and other departments are the benefactors of this, but this was really the, the work of Mr. Bales and other city staff. So that'll conclude our report, we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Let's move on to council questions. Are there any questions of staff?
No.
Nope, nope. Councilman Jackson, no? We're good? Okay, thank you so much, Chief Phillips, appreciate it. Let's move on to public comment, in person or in Zoom. Madam City Clerk?
Mayor, we did not receive any speaker cards for this item. We do have one virtual hand raise. Laura Pena, your three minutes will begin, once you begin speaking.
Hi, yes, Laura Pena here. I was looking through the, the staff report, and I just want to make sure that the public understands in regards to privacy concerns, because it appears that the scope of the data collection for the ALPR cameras will collect license plate data of all cars in the vicinity, not just vehicles that are suspected of violating parking or being connected to a crime. And this includes vehicles driven by law-abiding citizens going about their daily activities, raising some who have concerns for mass surveillance. So I just, it's just, it's a big move, I'm not disagreeing with it, I'm just, it's just a concern. And in regards to the data retention periods, it's a three-month retention for all ALPR reads, and it's a one-year retention for all AL, ALPR hits. And so I just want to be clear that people who are coming into our city, who are parking, they're, they will have their license plate read. How many other cities do this, and are there any issues that have come up in regards to privacy concerns? So, thank you.
Are there any other comments from Zoom?
We have no other virtual hands raised.
Okay. Chief Phillips, would you like to address that question, please, regarding privacy and?
Certainly, yes. So as, as mentioned in the staff report, the police department has a policy on the use of access to and any use of the ALPR data, just like confidential crime information, any officer would, would require a need-to-know and a right-to-know, and if they don't, there are consequences. Quite, quite frankly, it's a misdemeanor to misuse confidential law enforcement data. So we, we, we watch this, officers are required to do the training, they're required to acknowledge the policy, and it is a very valuable crime investigations tool. We have solved multiple, multiple cases where we have information that is crime data that's put into a database and may not ever look at it whatsoever, but when we have a crime in a specific area and we have five vehicles in that area that may or may not be related to the crime, we can cross-reference that against other investigative tools, and we've solved many crimes. So the data is there, it's stored, and to the previous question, it's, it's CGIS compliant, it requires all of the FBI CGIS requirements. So it's there, but the use of the information is managed, and again, well, I was going to say with the policy, but also with the audits. We're doing regular audits as well to make sure that our officers, our staff are adhering to those policy requirements.
So you're, when you say audits, city, police, our police department can look back through the records and say, oh, wait a second here, last week, so-and-so, and you would have to, of course, know who that was.
Yes.
So-and-so, such-and-such an officer accessed these records, and then you would question why and, and so on?
Yes, and if it was, if it was not related to a criminal investigation, something that they had a, a legal reason to investigate, we're not going to just check random information, any, any resident, any visitor, we're not going to look at that. And, and if we do, there, there needs to be a connection to a criminal investigation. So any employee that touches this system, almost with every single click of a button, that leaves a digital fingerprint, which we can go back and check exactly what was done.
And that actually brings another question up. Who does have access to this? Obviously, not just everyone on city staff, police department only, I would assume, and is there a certain rank and above only would be able to just go back and look at a particular license plate and where it was in such, such a day?
It's, it's not necessarily restricted to a certain rank, it depends on their role and what their access level will be. So things like creating a hot list and something that would cause alerts, which would generate an officer to do a traffic stop, that's probably detectives, supervisors, sergeants. But this is available to all police officers and some professional staff as well. The reason being, and these are all employees of the police department, they've been completely vetted through, we have to do annual tests and compliances with CLETS, California Law Enforcement Telecommunication System, I know everyone loves acronyms. But these are law enforcement personnel, because our patrol officers, they do field investigations, and they will take a crime report at 11:00 PM, and by 1:00 AM, they already have the suspect identified, they have the leads, and they hand all of the information to our detectives before they even get in the next morning, and that's the follow-up. So we want to make sure that this database is accessible to all of our officers, including some of our professional staff, so that they can conduct the investigation immediately and not waiting days or weeks.
Right. No, I understand that, and I'm, I'm just, because of what you just said about it, it's not just, every officer is allowed to access it, actually, it would not make much sense if every officer couldn't access this information at all times. I was just wanted to just question a, a little bit about, is there any kind of automatic, if any particular officer accesses it numerous times, or if there's, I mean, is there any kind of overlook as to who does it and how often and so on?
That's done as part of the audit process, yes.
Okay, all right, all right, great, thank you, I appreciate it very much. That should answer the question. Any other questions of staff?
Yes. Little bit more on the whole privacy issue. Don't some cities have a procedure in place where a second detective must also acknowledge the search, or is it just one, one detective alone can do it?
It, it could, it could be done by, by any of the detectives or any of the officers, but anything that's going to be actionable, where, where there's going to be follow-up, we're not going to, and no officer or detective is going to do that. They're going to be working with their supervisor, they're going to be doing follow-up with fellow detectives, so it's, if I'm doing just a basic field investigation and I have, all I have is the information on the license plate, I may do some information, but I'm going to be providing that, submitting that to a supervisor to review and approve, and then it's going to go to a detective, and then there's also a detective supervisor who's going to review and approve, and any action, any follow-up that we do is going to be in conjunction with several detectives and a supervisor.
Okay, and, and does the system, the system potentially can come up with legal innocent drivers that might be near a scene, and it picks that up, and then it doesn't release that all, that information to the detective directly, isn't it? Wait until it?
No, that's.
One shows up a second time, or how does that work?
Thank you, that, that's a very good question.
Sure.
When we get information, when we get a read, it just gives us the license plate, and it'll give us an image of that license plate, so the back of the car. It doesn't give us any information on the registrant, who owns the car, where the vehicle is registered to, the year of the vehicle. All that has to be done secondarily when, if it is a possible suspect vehicle, secondarily through the investigation. So yes, it, it could provide information on a vehicle that was in the area, but through the investigative process, vehicles are ruled out, this is not the suspect vehicle we're looking for, it'll be cross-referenced on other investigations, and so, yeah, it will, it's a process of elimination, but that's what the investigative follow-up is.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions of staff? All right, close questions of staff, and is there any public comment? Madam City Clerk?
Mayor, we did not receive any speaker cards for this item. We did have public comment a little bit earlier. Yes.
Good evening. I've worked with some of these technologies professionally speaking, and they did a great job, I think, the chief, talking about investigative purposes, I think it's excellent for that. Something that I think I would like to stress is that preventatively, it can also be used to prevent crimes here, if some of these vehicles have been reported stolen in surrounding cities, and they're coming to our city to burglarize a home, steal someone else's card, some sort of crime they want to do here, these cameras can pick these vehicles up and alert, the dispatch center alert the units in the area to go searching for it before they have a chance to engage in that crime here in the city. We spoke about something like this, I think, last year, and my comment was the same then. These technologies, as a citizen of Hermosa, help me feel safer, and that's why I like them. Thank you.
Okay, so we will go to council comments and deliberations now. Any, any more further comments, deliberations, or motions?
I'll make a motion to approve staff, staff recommendation.
I'll second that.
Sorry.
All right. If there's no other, no other deliberations, let's have a vote, please. Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Francois?
Yes.
Councilmember Keegan?
Aye.
Councilmember Jackson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem D. Toy?
Aye.
Mayor Saman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. All right, now we move on to future agenda items, number 14. Any future addenda items? Anyone would like to propose?
I would.
Yes, Councilman Keegan?
Mayor, I wanted to see if I could get some support to bring back an item from staff about changing the mayor rotation from an acclimation of three votes to a standard rotation by order of election, and see if we can put that on the agenda to change that back to that.
When you say back to, what do you mean by back? We've always had elections for mayor and mayor pro tem, according to procedures, you're not talking about changing the criteria, you're talking about actually changing it to not having elections. Is that right? Just having an automatic procedure?
Correct.
So you're coming, you're attempting to come up with some definitions that will fit all, all scenarios?
I'm not, we're not debating that.
No, no, I'm just wondering what you're proposing.
Proposing to bring it back so that we rotate the mayor based on the way you finished in the election.
So not a election, it would be a, based on a scenario situation?
We'd probably still be required to vote for it, but it's, there's policies in other cities that allow it to just be rotated, not the way we're doing it. So we can either follow some leads that's already been done, or staff can come back and say, we can't do it, or we'll see what they come back with. It's not mine to decide. I am telling them what I want to do, I'm giving direction.
Okay, I'm not clear on...
And don't support it.
Yeah, well, I might support it if it was clear, but it's not clear to me.
Okay.
What you're requesting, so.
So there is no second support for that? Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm seeking support of the closed session minutes from item 4B. At the May 5th, 2025, and the May 13th, 2025 meetings, agenda is to be made public.
Which meetings are those?
May 5th and May 13th. Item 4B on both of them.
Item 4B.
Will be on what?
On this agenda, this evening?
Closed session.
Closed session of which, the one we had tonight? I don't know what those are.
I'll support that. May 5th, 4B, was public employee performance evaluation, and the 13th was Government Code Section 54954.5E. And 54957, public employee appointment and public employment.
So there's two people for that? That's an information item?
Mr. City Attorney, is this something that gets discussed in closed session or an open session?
In open session. You just can't get into contents of the closed session unless the council majority votes to disclose those minutes, then they can be disclosed.
And we can do that now? Or we wait until this is a, this is a future agenda item?
It's going to come back, is what's going to happen.
It would come back in another, it's not on today's agenda, so the public didn't know that this is going to be discussed, but if you put it on a future agenda, it would be discussed at the next.
We have two council members that want to do this, so that makes it an information item?
Yep.
And it comes back as a future agenda item?
If there are two, then it comes back as an informational.
So there's different ways to disclose minutes, and the different ways that it can be disclosed has to be done in closed session, because we would then be discussing the specific actions that were taken and how we want to disclose it. So wouldn't that have to be a discussion in closed session?
The closed session contents can be discussed in closed session. You can have a very limited discussion in open session if that's the preference.
Well, for example, when we have closed sessions, I don't want to get into a debate of this, but I'm just trying to find out procedures. When we have closed sessions and you say no reportable action, no reportable action is required under the Brown Act, in that closed session, we could vote to disclose specific things about the action.
Yes.
Or specifically not. So that discussion has to be happen in closed session, not in open.
That discussion can happen in closed session.
Because then we would be discussing the different things that occurred.
You can also have a very limited discussion in open session about whether to waive the privilege for those minutes.
Which would be voted on by council.
Yes, which would be voted on by council in this setting. But again, it would be very limited, because nobody in the course of that discussion can get into the contents of the closed session.
Right. So I see no purpose in it at all, I'll be honest with you. If we can't disclose anything, why are we having a discussion about disclosing things?
Especially in open session.
Makes no sense to me.
Yeah, especially in open session. We...
Okay, so there's two people that want it. It's going to be on a future agenda item, and it'll be an informational item on them, and then we'll...
It's a time waster. Let's get it over with. It's been agendized, move on.
Yeah, that's fine. I would like to put on the future agenda item a report about the, using Channel 8 for the public viewing of our city council meetings and planning commission meetings and so on. It has been almost two years since that system worked. Every so often, it comes up and we sort of forget about it for a while, and then somebody says, well gee, how come, when is that ever going to get fixed? And at one point, there was a discussion that there was some part missing that we don't have, that the cable company needs or something, and done that one another few months before somebody brought it up again and again and again. I would like to have a very honest discussion about what indeed do we have to do to get this working again? I think it's an important part of public information, and I think it should be returned to use.
Your Honor, is this the spectrum?
Yes.
So I got an update from that. It was a reminder that the fiber upgrade project will go live. The live date is scheduled for June 25th.
So it will be returned?
That's my understanding, of course, that's the day after the next meeting. But that, from this information, from this information I have from staff, June 25th, it'll go live again.
That's great. Thank you.
And then, from then on, if you need anything, you'd come to us, if you need any council action regarding what needs to be done.
If it doesn't work on June 25th, we can bring it back after that, if that's your pleasure.
Okay.
Would that satisfy?
Beautiful. Thank you. That's about the quickest action on a request.
There you go.
Agenda item ever. You're just saying, oh, it's already done. All right, there we go. Any other future agenda items? No? Seeing none? Then I will move to adjournment. Tonight's meeting is adjourned at 8:14. Thank you.